Good afternoon, everyone. It is one thirty PM on August fifth, twenty twenty five. I will call this regular meeting of council of the municipality of Jasper to order. I welcome all councillors and municipal staff assembled and all those people assembled in the gallery and those watching on our Zoom link. Thank you all. Today is August fifth, one year and two days ago. Well, fighting to protect our home and Jasper National Park, Alberta Wildland firefighter Morgan Kitchen sadly died in service to all of us. I would ask that we observe now a moment of silence in recognition of his efforts. Thank you all. Councillors, you have before you today's proposed agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or other changes to be made to the agenda? Seeing nothing, may I have a motion, please, that council approve the agenda for today's meeting as presented. Councillor Melnick, thank you. All those in favor. There are none opposed. That is carried. There are two sets of minutes for approval. On today's agenda, we begin with the minutes of the regular meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty five. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections required to be made to those minutes? Seeing nothing, I would look for a motion that council approve the minutes of the July eighth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting as presented. Councillor Waxer, thank you. All those in favor. There are none opposed. That is carried. And again, with respect to the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, are there any errors, omissions, or corrections required to be made to those minutes? Again, seeing no hands, I would look for a motion that council approve the minutes of the July fifteen, twenty twenty five committee of all meeting as presented. Councillor Keller Grandi, thank you for that. All those in favor. There are none opposed. That is carried. That takes us to agenda item four, delegations. At this point in the meeting, while we have no delegations on our printed agenda, we always welcome at this point individuals from the community speaking to any matter on the agenda. If there is any member of the gallery who wishes to speak to any matter on the agenda, you are welcome to do so at this time. However, I would say that if you are here to speak to a matter arising in your agenda item six, which is the public meeting, ask that you wait until that time to be heard within the context of the public hearing. Looking out, I see no hands, no motion, no rush towards the microphone. I will give it another moment, and if no one moves, I will assume that there is no one in the gallery who wishes to speak to any item on the agenda. We will then move to agenda item four, correspondence. Again, there is nothing on our agenda. Mr. Given, there is nothing in this community that requires council's attention at this time. So that takes us to agenda item six, which is the public hearing with respect to an advertising bylaw. This public hearing, I will declare it to be open. The public hearing will be conducted pursuant to the terms of the municipal legislation and pursuant to a procedure by law. The process will be that administration will present with respect to the proposed bylaw and any recommendation from administration. We will then receive presentations from the public. I can advise that we have received two letters with respect to the matter from members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak will be limited to three minutes, subject to any questions that may be asked by councillors about their presentation. Following receipt of all presentations from the public, councillors will have an opportunity to question administration. We will then close the public hearing and proceed to any motions which might arise from what we have heard during the public hearing. With that, I will turn to administration to make its presentation with respect to the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor Arlen. Good afternoon. I'm here to speak to the proposed advertising bylaw. This came before council earlier in July when council gave a first reading to the bylaw, and an advertising bylaw, as we're presenting, requires a public hearing before it can be passed as per the Municipal Government Act, so that's why we're here today. And also, because it's a public hearing, the very matter that is being discussed in the advertising bylaw is how we have to advertise for the public hearing. So essentially, how we got here is that following the twenty twenty four wildfire, there is no longer a newspaper, like a written publication, like a physical paper publication circulating in the community, which is how the municipality met its legislative requirement for advertising previously. So under the Municipal Government Act, when there's a statutory notice that needs to be provided, so it could be for a public hearing like today, but it could also be for specific bylaws. Borrowing bylaws, for example, are subject to advertising. Upcoming municipal elections advertising is also considered a statutory notice, so the requirements for advertising set out in the act apply to a variety of items that the municipality deals with. And essentially, to meet the advertising requirements settled in the MGA, any local government needs to publish at least for two consecutive weeks in a local newspaper. Like I said, that's the method we employed previously. Mailed or delivered to every residence in the area of the proposed bylaw. So in order to have this public hearing meet the requirements for advertising, we did a mail drop last week, so we distributed a paper notice to every single P O box. Or given by a method provided for in an advertising bylaw, essentially. So publication in newspapers, news drop, or door-to-door drop in every household in the community, or any method provided for in an advertising bylaw are the requirements of the act. Mailed or delivered to every residence has logistical and cost challenges. That is currently our only method of meeting the legislative requirements. Unless and until council passes a bylaw which sets out the methods for advertising, and that is the matter before you today. As I mentioned, you've seen this bylaw in July. At the time, council also asked for administration to look into an email distribution process where people could register and sign up to receive those notifications by email. We do have the capacity to do that, and the systems and the information technology requirements for that are already available in-house, so we're administration is ready and willing and able to make that happen. And you will see that this method is not listed in the first reading version of the bylaw, but there is a recommendation on the agenda list that proposes some wording that would enable you to add such a clause to the bylaw, should you wish to do so. And yeah, so the reason we're here is because we no longer have a print publication in the community, and we need to ensure that we can meet our legislative advertising requirements under the act. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Dendon. I will now look to the gallery and ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to the matter. No?
You were stepping up.
Showing them the first names. Welcome in, although we know you. You can state your name for the record, and again, three minutes.
My name is Andrew Ziegler. I'm the publisher of the Jasper Local.
You too will remember.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Ziegler. I'm the publisher of the Jasper Local. Bylaw two seven one states erroneously, there are no newspapers or other publications circulating in the area. While Jasper no longer has a print newspaper, we are fortunate to have two digital newspapers. Media has always undergone format changes, and it will continue to do so. Notably, the federal government has updated their definition of newspapers to accommodate both print and electronic formats. News Media Canada reports that fifty-nine percent of Canadian adults read newspaper articles on websites or apps, and twenty-nine percent read digital e-ditions. This migration to digital formats will continue. With today's information overload, getting people to pay attention to municipal affairs is not a trivial matter. While posting on social media may seem appealing due to high number of followers organizations can accumulate, the average organic reach of a Facebook post is five percent or less. Facebook's Guidelines for Advertisers state that on average, there are fifteen hundred plus stories that could appear in a person's news feed each time they log into Facebook. Organizations trying to put out messaging on social media are constantly fighting for attention. Meta states, "The battle only get worse." Meta states that "The total number of pages liked by the typical Facebook user grew more than fifty percent last year." The July eighth public hearing notice posted on the MOJ Facebook page received seventy-four likes and six shares. That same public hearing notice on the Jasper Local was viewed eight thousand seven hundred and eighty times. Public notices on digital newspapers are effective for the same reason they've been historically effective in print newspapers. Because they have a dedicated audience of local readers. On average, twelve thousand people read the Jasper Local every month. With few exceptions, all of our advertisements are from local advertisers, which makes these messages an important part of the local information flow in Jasper. Finally, local news media is facing an existential crisis. Since two thousand and eight, five hundred and sixty-six local news outlets closed in three hundred and seventy-two communities across Canada. The driving force behind the decline is loss of revenue. In twenty nineteen, Google and Facebook held a combined eighty percent share of the online advertising market. Local newspapers, print or digital, cover stories that regional or national newsrooms never will at a level of understanding that they will never have. And they do it as objective observers, which builds credibility and therefore readership. Recognizing digital newspapers as the newspapers they truly are would be a significant show of support for community newspapers and the value they provide. More importantly, for the needs of the MOJ, utilizing local media for your advertising needs is demonstrably the best way to reach substantially all residents in the relevant area. Changing the bylaw to eliminate newspaper notices on the pretext that a digital newspaper is not a newspaper undermines the value of community newspapers and would underserves the residents you are obliged to reach with the MOJ's important messaging. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from councillors? Councillor Wilson?
Just on publication, like schedule, which considered Jasper Local to be a weekly publication?
Once you move to digital, we publish stories as they come out. So in the past, and Bob will talk a little bit more about this, when we would wait and news would be late because we published on Thursday, or the old typical community paper comes out on a Thursday. Now, as the story comes out, we put it live. So we end up publishing the same amount of content as we would have in the past, sometimes more, sometimes less, because we're not limited anymore. And depending on the news cycle, but as the story is available and relevant, we aim to get it to press right away.
And maybe just to follow up, how would, you know, you represented the Jasper Local, how would the Jasper Local propose to meet the requirements as I think being posted for two weeks in perpetuity? How could the digital media be able to confirm that that was the case?
So how we do that is, we only have, if you've seen on our articles, we run three ads in every article. And when you buy that place, and we're not fixed on a scheduled date anymore, it's the date you want to start and the date you want to end, with a minimum of seven days. It runs in every article view during that period of time, guaranteed. It's not based on targeting. We're not deciding who gets to see it. You get that spot. You own that spot. If I read an article from that was published that day, or that was published in the archive that somebody is interested in, they will always see that ad in that period of time. In every single article. How we meet that, and we're extremely flexible, I think, for one of these public hearings, I got a request very last minute. I think there'd been an oversight to post it, and I posted it within half an hour and had it up and ready. So any dates, any time, Bob and I make sure we get everything up on time. So we definitely meet the scheduled requirements. We can provide image proof that it was there, and we also have that exactly how many people viewed it in that time period. And in some ways, it's stronger than a print publication in that I pick up a print paper, I flip through it, it goes in the burn pile. I have a digital five articles that come out separately during the week. I see that ad five times. And repetition matters when it comes to advertising.
Other questions from councillors? Go ahead, Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you coming to council. What I'm hearing is that there is a commitment that the Jasper Local will be able to adhere to the requirements that we need to adhere to according to the Municipal Government Act for advertising fourteen days ahead of time. And I'm reading between the lines, but I don't know if he said that.
Yes, we can meet those requirements.
If there are no further questions from councillors, I will just comment and not question to you, but I appreciate the presentation as indicated by Councillor Melnick and by others. We are bound by the municipal government. It determines, in this case, I think, what is a publication that will meet the requirements of the app. And while I agree entirely that the world is changing and digital media is the new form, or at least the current form, rather than print newspaper, I will undertake on your behalf, because I want full process to ask a question directly of our director with respect to whether or not your commitment could in fact enable us to meet the requirements of the legislation by which we are bound. So it's not necessarily a question of not having faith in a local publication. It is whether or not in our own bylaw that meets the requirements of the legislation. And I would also draw your attention to the fact that although it may not meet the precise requirements by which we are bound, there is a provision that we can advertise by any means deemed appropriate by the C A O. So it is not a prohibition against advertising in local media. It is simply that advertising in digital media may not get us to the point where we have to be vis a vis the provincial legislation which fights us. Again, I thank you for the presentation. I appreciate a local voice at the table, and I appreciate what local news media does for our community. But we are still bound, and I will undertake to ask the very question of administration to see whether there is a potential here. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're up. Right isn't me?
Yes.
No, you're off. All right. Good afternoon. My name's Bob Kobe. I'm the editor of Jasper Local. I've been privileged to work in Jasper and local media in Jasper for the last two decades. In two thousand and five, when I moved to Jasper, there were two print newspapers in town. The Booster was the longstanding paper of record, and the Fitzie, where I was hired, was the independent upstart. About a year into Fitzie's run, we ran a cheeky house ad boasting about our circulation numbers. The ad was an attempt to persuade advertisers to jump ship. Memory serves, Fitzie was circulating about three thousand copies per week, which we bragged was about twice that of the Booster. As it turned out, three thousand wasn't the magic number. Newsstands are often still half-full at the end of the week. I was printing the Jasper Local between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty-one. I normally printed between fifteen hundred and two thousand bucks. It's not exactly apples to apples, but compared to the readership of the print version of the Jasper Local, we can see that our digital reach is much more broad. Fact would take pains to point out to advertisers. Unlike when we were in print, digital newspapers aren't beholden to a press headline. Before, a weekly or bi-monthly news cycle made it difficult to publish breaking news. If important information became available on Wednesday or Thursday, it would be a full six or seven days before the printed paper could tell readers about it. Those weeks, we were publishing less than newspaper and more than oldspaper. On the contrary, digital format means we can serve up timely relevant information to the audience as soon as we can report on it. Thanks to modern publishing tools, we can let our readers know exactly when we serve up these stories. These advantages have implications for advertisers. No longer are their notices buried in the back pages to be glossed over as readers skim for interesting headlines. Now, with our digital format, those same ads are served on every single story as long as the ad is running. That means whether readers are interested in a sports story, a recap of a council meeting, a wildlife essay, or an archive story from months or even years ago, they will see the current advertiser's message either in, middle, or end of their reading experience. The municipality is already conducting business with digital newspapers in the same way as they did when we were in print. Our attendance as media members is noted during council meetings, and when the town has important news to share on projects or projects to unveil, we receive courtesy call and an invitation to attend. Not everyone is on Facebook. Social media is addictive, ripe with misinformation, and rewards negative engagement. Many people decided better off without it. Although Facebook and Instagram seem to have staying power, social media platforms come and go. Finally, making the decision on this bylaw, I would encourage council and C A O to employ abductive reasoning. Digital newspapers publish news and information. They report on our civic institutions and tell stories about the people in our communities. Make space for local businesses and organizations to advertise, which importantly is how they maintain solvency. Mostly, digital newspapers exist to serve their communities. Please don't overthink this. If it looks like a newspaper, sounds like a newspaper, and behaves like a newspaper, it is a newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kobe. Again, questions from councillors? It appears up, and I won't repeat all that I just said.
Well, I might wait, make one comment in response to what you said. I believe that the M G A is referencing newspapers from a statute or a fail from nineteen thirty-seven. So again, it's important to realize that that media formats change over time. You know, appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak as a member of the public at this public hearing?
Hello, my name is Kirsten Schmittin. I'm a local Jasper person. And I find that the local media is where I get my information. I don't go on the municipal website. I really don't want to get my information on Facebook because I find it's a very disruptive social media site. I don't like that it's misogynistic and prejudiced, and people can say whatever they want. So I really don't appreciate finding my information there. I also think, although you have the legislative ability to pull the municipal notices from the local paper, I don't, I think we have a moral obligation to keep them posted in our local media. We have to keep our local papers alive, and if the municipality can help do that by paying to post information in the paper, I feel as a local that's where I want my tax payer money to go.
Thank you for that submission. Again, I will look to councillors for any questions they may have. Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for presenting. I want to make sure I didn't miss here. Did you say that the municipality would poll?
Well, pull the notices from the local paper, not pay to have them posted in the local paper? Is that right? Is that what we're doing?
I don't know if that's what we're doing. We'll address that with administration. I don't think we're pulling opportunities to use other venues such as the local. And then the reference of polling, I don't think is in the bylaw. And it allows, the C A O has a lot of opportunity to use whatever is at his discretion or discretion to use whatever is appropriate. But I don't think the term polling reflects what's in the bylaw, and I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Okay, and I don't really understand. So what we're talking about right now is that you don't you don't have an obligation to post in the local digital media, is that right? You wouldn't feel a need to have an obligation to post in the local.
The question is, how do we meet our statutory requirement? That's, I think, the real issue here. We can do as we choose with respect to getting the word out, but we have a legislative requirement imposed by the province of Alberta that says we must do this minimum. We can do more, but we have to meet the standard. And right now, with print media vanished, we cannot meet as standard as we used to. And again, as I indicated earlier, administration is better able to give you precision on that matter. But we are not at that point of this process yet, or I am going to ask them, but I will be asking them to address that specific point. But the idea is not to disadvantage local media, whether it be digital or otherwise. The point of all of this is that we have legislative requirements imposed by the province that we have to meet. And to give that analogy, if it says you must wear a coat, a sweater won't do. Even though a sweater might be preferable in so many ways, but that's kind of where we're at, I think. But again, we will come back to that when we ask administration at that stage of the process.
I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to clarify your statement, the Mayor Arlen's statement, and we will address this later in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Art Lordson. I'm a Jasper resident, representing myself. I think it's everything I was going to be saying is already being well said by people far better informed on this subject than me. I would like to speak to public hearings in general, and you know, if this is what's catching the council's eye at the moment, I think there's far more important things that we should be having public hearings on. For instance, accountability in J R C C and the appropriateness of soil testing and how it's holding up the rebuilding of Jasper, but that's for another time, but I want that on the record. Because that would be a promise, you would be a big public hearing. Anyway, on to the current matter. I think that the issue here is that the Municipal Government Act clearly needs to be updated and dragged kicking and screaming into the modern digital age. And perhaps council could be lobbying to the province to get it done and allow and allow businesses like Andrea's to help support the community and support the munis' efforts to get their word out into the community.
Thank you, Mr. Jasper.
No more storytelling for you.
No apologies. Any questions from councillors?
Thank you for the opportunity.
My left speak twice.
Yeah, it is not within the process, but have you notes?
I have a question. Yes.
With no counsel, it is, it is beyond process. Each speaker is entitled to address this for three minutes. The speaker second time extends it for one without offering the same courtesy to all with unanimous consent from council, I would permit it, but not without. Now, be quite sense.
Basically, discussion I've heard at the end is that we're advising the act because we have, I understand that compliance with the law. And we have a dash in the newspapers that dates back to a bill from 1937. However, when I look at the Municipal Government Act, they list newspapers 10 times. I do not believe they list social media as a recommended distribution mechanism. Yet we're now legislating that in the bylaw and adding social media. And why could we not also add digital newspaper in if we need to redefine it there? That's my point.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard with respect to the subject matter of this public hearing? Give it another moment. I see no more indication of people heading to the microphone, so I will conclude that public presentations are completed. And I would look to questions from councillors to administration. And I might begin by posing the question that I promised first presenter with respect to whether or not publication in digital media would meet the municipality's obligations under the legislation, Director.
Thank you for relaying the question, Mayor Ireland. I think it's been acknowledged that the legislation, the Municipal Government Act, is a bit outdated in terms of in terms of its definitions of a newspaper. And I think the key word being circulating in the area, which means that it's a, there's a paper copy involved. So technically, someone could start a eight and a half by 11 publication in the community and have broad distribution and meet those requirements, right? Which obviously is not very in touch with, with how people get their information. But anyway, having that said, the lack of a print publication is, is why we're here. And if it's not a print publication, it does not meet the requirements of the MGA. The only other alternative available to the municipality in the absence of an advertising bylaw is a mail drop, like we just did for this particular public hearing. The third method to be compliant is to define in a bylaw what the municipality will do to meet its requirements. Which methods are in the bylaw are entirely up to council and very much can include various different means of providing information out there. And currently, what was proposed and what received first reading at the July 8th meeting was that statutory advertisement shall be posted on the municipality's website for a period of 14 days. And that a convenience copy, so a copy that might slightly differ in format and content, but that provides the gist of the information could be shared on municipal social media, on notice boards at municipal facilities, and other means deemed appropriate by the CAO. So paid advertising in any shape or form could very well fall under other means deemed appropriate by the CAO. So it is not that the proposed bylaw prohibits advertising. It leaves it at the discretion of the CAO. Our communications manager and our communications team are pretty in touch with how people get their information and, and where to get those, those ads out. One would imagine that digital media would be included in one of those methods that the CAO might approve. So it currently, the wording of the bylaw does not poll or limit digital advertising in newspapers. However, it is optional. It falls under convenience copy. It doesn't fall under the mandatory advertising requirement. If council chose to do so, you could add a clause that says advertising in local digital newspapers could be added as a mandated advertising method, which would come at a cost and some some coordination by municipal staff, which arguably already happens, but there is a bit of a fiscal incentive here. So anytime we have a statutory notice, so like I said, it could be for a boring bylaw, it could be for the elections, it could be for a public hearing, it could be for a variety of items that are all listed in the MGA and, and other associated legislation. What do you want staff to do as a mandatory measure versus what do you want as a convenience copy, which is the second segment of the advertising method? I think is exactly the conversation that council is expected, expected to have today. And, and I would like to thank the members of the public who spoke at the public hearing because a public hearing without public input would be a bit awkward. So that's why we're here. And I feel the need to acknowledge and thank our local media for their presence and for the work that they do in the community. And this by no means intended as a a way to not support that type of journalism, but it is solely a legislative exercise, but which has ramifications which council should consider.
Thank you, Director Diddon. Councillor Wilson?
Yeah, I would speak, well, I guess can't speak on behalf of council, but I don't think council was trying to keep local digital media out of the conversation. I, I would support adding a clause in there, although we do got to look at the fact that if the Jasper Local or the Fitzie do not exist anymore, then we're back at the table and we're, we're offside to the bylaw in front of us now. And sure, that may or may not ever happen, but we'll, we would have to deal with that in, in the future if that would be the case. And I guess my question, I don't know to who, but we have to figure out what is the definition of local digital media, because you know, is the Fitzie local or owned by, you know, companies outside of our municipality. They report regionally as to, I think Jasper locals, so I think we need to figure out some wording there, but I would support adding digital media to this bylaw. There's an opportunity, so.
Other questions for administration? Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I wish to support Councillor Wilson and, you know, the opportunity to add the fact that there are opportunities for digital publications specific to Jasper. Where we could advertise and meet the mandatory 14-day requirement. I would hate to see us advertising in, say, Hinton, Canmore, Bent. You know, I think when we would include a digital advertising opportunity for bylaws relating to Jasper, we should restrict it to Jasper-based digital newspapers as opposed to maybe regional newspapers. And I leave that for councillors to ponder and perhaps a comment from administration if it seems appropriate.
Director Diddon?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland, and thank you, Councillor Melnick, for that, for that proposed wording. And I would suggest that the two parts that I would encourage council to consider in passing a motion to modify the bylaw. So once the public hearing is closed, council will have an opportunity to recommend amendments on the bylaw before potentially giving it second reading. And if you wish to go in that direction, so include, I think Jasper-based digital newspapers would, would fit the description that is contemplated. For two consecutive weeks, once a week for two consecutive weeks would be better wording than 14 days, just from an administrative point of view. Mind you, we've heard from the local media representative in attendance that the timeline can be very quick to get ads up, but publish at least once a week for two consecutive weeks would be consistent with language in the MGA. And then whether you would like to add a clause of this nature as a mandatory step that administration must take, or you would like to include it under convenience copy. So more clarity around the fact of what's being, what's being contemplated, but whether it's mandatory or subject to the discretion of the CAO is the other matter to consider, which part of the bylaw you would put it in. Thank you.
I have a question. Director Diddon, with respect to the recommended addition of circulation by way of a subscription list. I take it that in a technical perspective, that would be added as a statutory method. So it would be in the bylaw 3.2.2. And we would then have two statutory methods, one posted on the municipality of Jasper's official website or circulated by a subscription list. And if that is the case, then I wonder whether what now appears as item 3.2.2 should be 3.3. Because right now it falls under the subheading statutory advertisements, and I think it is a non-statutory type of advertisement, which could, as we've just discussed, include social media, but a reformatting of the bylaw to have two methods of statutory advertisements and then additional methods of non-statutory forms of advertising. Is that something that makes sense from an administrative point of view?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. It, it does. I agree with you. And then that would provide you the structure to determine whether you would want any other potential additions to be statutory or to be under the convenience copy at the discretion of the CAO.
Thank you very much. I can bring that up later in, in the debate portion with council. Are there other questions then for administration from councillors? If there are not, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councillor Waxer.
Sorry, it took me a moment to formulate the question, but through you, Mayor Ireland, to administration. If there were multiple digital platforms, would we have to be careful not to legally require us us to face, put an advertisement in, in eight or 10, or, you know, I know there's only two at this point, but, but is that a risk we would run?
Go ahead, Director.
Mayor Ireland, through to Councillor Waxer. I think the, to Councillor Melnick's point earlier, the definition of a Jasper-based digital media, or is, is media better than newspaper, or you know, how do we get the right definition in place? But also, I keep referring to the current wording in the Municipal Government Act, which is published at least once a week for two consecutive weeks in at least one newspaper or other publication. So recognizing the fact that there are several in your community, you can, you can pick one. Having that said, municipal practice, when we had two publications circulating in the community, we wouldn't advertise in both. If it to, essentially to your concern, where to keep things equitable and make sure that we weren't favoring one outlet over the other, in the event that we would get many more. What is the definition of whatever wording we decide to include in the bylaw is, is an interesting one, but it could be circumvented by adding in at least one of the Jasper-based digital media, but, but then you might repeat that inequity of what if there's three, but we only advertise in the one all the time, right? Like it's a, it's a hard balance to find.
Other questions from councillors to administration? Thank you, Councillor Keller MP.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, to director the dump. If it has to be advertised on a two-week basis, would you advertise in one digital format, one week and another, another week? Or would have to be the same?
Mayor Ireland, through to Councillor Keller MP. I think at this stage in relation to the Municipal Government Act, whatever we put in the bylaw is what we have to comply with. So wording matters, and if you're contemplating something of that nature, as long as it's clear in the bylaw, we're on side with the legislation.
In the absence of further questions for administration, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor Hall. That motion then would be that there be no further business. The public hearing of August 5th, 2025 be closed at 2:18 PM. Any debates on that motion? I would call question. All those in favor? That motion is carried. There are none opposed. The public hearing is closed. I would now look for motions arising from the public hearings. Councillors have motions to put forward? Councillor Wilson?
I would make a motion that council amend the bylaw to add in, geez, I think it's 3.2 under statutory advertisements shall be well, sorry, we add in, shall be advertised in a, sorry, a local digital media. Or once a week for two consecutive weeks. I think that's the wording that I would change the bylaw.
And for clarity, you're proposing that addition in what is now in the draft bylaw to be added to section 3.2.2. So that is not the statutory term, but the discretionary term?
No, I would prefer it to be the statutory term.
I thought it right. The motion would be to amend the bylaw in its current form to have as an item under three point two point one advertising. Can't remember the words, in local media, the two-week provision in local digital media?
Once a week for two consecutive weeks in local, in a, at least one local digital medium.
Thank you. Just looking at council to make sure that they understand what the motion is and what you would be voting on, Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Worship. I appreciate. I envisioned this being three point two point two point four. And then there's a separate point. So that's clear that there's social media accounts, there's no scores. The CAO has a discretion. And three point two point two point four would define the advertising in Jasper-based digital newspapers, and I might look to administration to see if that's appropriate.
Worship, if I can offer some advice to facilitate council getting to the decisions that they'd like to. My suggestion would be that maybe the First Amendment would be to move the current three point two point two and the following items to be item three point three. Because that separates the statutory section, which is three point two, from the items which are the optional, I'll just say they're non-statutory optional convenience copies. So then you'd have, so you could do that separation, which I think was a good observation, and Director N'Don recognized that, and then council can decide what things you might want to add to section three point two statutory, or what things you might want to add to section three point three optional. It just might be a little bit clear, because we are sort of dealing with this, Councillor Wilson's motion to add it as three point two point two. There is already a three point two point two, and so that it just might that separation between optional and statutory may be useful to do first, and then you can have the discussion debate about local digital media or the other option that was asked for by committee when you first saw this about a subscription-based email, and deciding whether you want those in the statutory section.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. Of course, I'm required to proceed with motions in the order in which they arise, but I think it was clear from Councillor Wilson that he in fact did intend this to be part of three point two statutory advertisement, not part of I hope will become three point three, the discretionary opportunities mentioned by Councillor Melnick. So I want to be clear, because we could do it as you suggest, or we could do it in different order, but we have to be clear whether this motion is to be a statutory requirement, which I understand it from Councillor Wilson to be. So procedurally, we'll wrestle with that. I could potentially ask Councillor Wilson to withdraw his motion for the time being to bring it back after we restructure the proposed bylaw, if you like. Your point is well taken, and thank you, Mr. Given.
If I may, I will withdraw my motion. And I could make a new motion to amend the bylaw and reassign the items under three point two point two as three point three. And then all corresponding numbers can be changed after that.
All right. Thank you for that. First, the withdrawal of the initial motion, and then that second motion. So council understands then that what is now three point two point two will become three point three, no longer statutory advertising environments, but discretionary or non-statutory opportunities. Is everybody comfortable that they understand firstly, the motion? If so, does anyone wish to speak to that motion? If not, I will call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. So we have successfully severed non-statutory notices from statutory notices. So now, Councillor Wilson, I would invite you to go back to your original motion to issue.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to modify by law two seven one to read under item three, advertising method, three point two point two, an addition of three point two point two, to read to advertise once a week for two consecutive weeks in at least one digital news, local digital news media.
Thank you for that motion, Councillor Wilson, and just for absolute clarity, that will be in addition under three point two statutory advertising requirements. Does anyone wish to speak to that motion? Councillor Keller, MP.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I just want to clarify that Councillor Wilson said at least one, that then if administration chose to advertise two, they could. Am I correct? Excellent. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to a motion? Councillor Wilson, do you wish to close? All right. I will call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Are there any other motions? Councillor Waxer?
That council amended the draft bylaw two seven one, the advertising bylaw twenty twenty five, to add a statement under section three point two as follows, circulated to interested parties by email through a subscription-based distribution list.
Thank you for that motion, Councillor Waxer, and so then, again, for clarity, section three point two statutory advertisements would include subsection one, posted prominently on the municipality of Jasper's official website. It would include two publication and at least one local digital media outlet, and then this would be the third edition under three point two. All agreed? Everybody understands that that is the motion? Is there any debate on that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Are there any other proposed amendments to the advertising bylaw? I see nothing. Which means, I think if my screen wasn't frozen, we could potentially move to a vote for second reading? Look to a councillor for a motion that council give second reading to bylaw number two seven one, the advertising bylaw twenty twenty five, as amended. Deputy Mayor Hall, thank you for that. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. The amended bylaw has achieved second reading. You can vote to the candidate for consent. That's not red where we are not entitled to go, and we'll be back here for third reading and potentially our next regular public meeting. All right. Thank you all. I think we can then say that the public hearing item on our agenda has been concluded. We can move to new business. Is it an opportunity for a short break? We've only been at it for an hour, but it might be convenient. So I will call a recess until two forty. Nine minutes. Thank you all. It is two forty. We are reassembled and back in session, and we move to agenda eight of seven, business. And we begin with seven point one presentation of the twenty twenty four audited consolidated financial statements. And I understand that we have our auditors present virtually. That is not a misuse of the English language. There they are.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Afternoon. Thanks for having me. How's everyone doing?
We are well here. Thank you.
Well, awesome. Awesome. Well, thanks for, thanks for having me here once again. Let me see if I can share my screen. Get easier. Okay. Just does that does that work for everybody?
Yes, it is. It was clear on the screen here. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Okay, well, so we'll get started. So thanks for having me here this afternoon to to discuss the municipality's twenty twenty four financial statements and our audit. So to begin this presentation, I usually like to discuss an overview of the audit, so why we have an audit, and really is to enhance the degree of confidence of those intended users of the financial statements. So the main users of these financial statements really being yourselves as councillors, ratepayers, the province of Alberta, municipal affairs, the federal government, so organizations or individuals with a vested interest in the financial performance of the municipality. This is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion. So we're giving assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. So what that means is as auditors, we're seeking reasonable assurance. So it's a high level assurance, but it's not absolute, as we're not auditing every transaction that happened during the year. Also, as auditors, we want to exercise professional judgment. We want to maintain professional skepticism, so a questioning mind. Stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement. So areas such as cutoff, want to make sure that transactions that occurred in the fiscal year have been reported correctly. I want to make sure that revenue is being recognized once services or performance obligations have been met. I want to make sure that your receivables are deemed to be collectible at your end. So again, those are just kind of areas of concern. And then a critical assessment of the audit evidence. So has the evidence we've obtained from either management or a third party potentially been altered in any way? When it comes to the municipality's financial statements or their independent auditors report, we indicate at the top our opinion, which is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards, so those accounting standards that all government entities, organizations report under. When it comes to the next part, the basis for opinion, here we outline that we conducted our audit in accordance with Canadian generally accepted accepted auditing standards. So auditing standards are the same across Canada, so whether you're a publicly traded company and not-for-profit or a local government, auditing standards are the same. It's the reporting frameworks in which the opinion is given that can be different. When it comes to responsibility of management, those charter governance for the preparation, fair presentation of the financial statements. And then the last part of the auditor's report outlines our responsibility as auditors, which in turn outlines our objective, which is to obtain the reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. On this slide here, you'll see a snapshot of where the municipality was at as of December thirty one, twenty twenty four. You'll see your cash position was up to just under forty million, so about a thirteen million dollar increase year over year. So you had generated positive cash flow from your operating activities. You in turn did spend thirty or twenty-five million on tangible capital asset additions, and as well as repaid a million dollars in debt, causing a net change or increase there of thirteen million. The next part of your statement of financial position are your taxes and grants, a place of taxes receivable. So you have seen a bit of an increase here, so your current taxes, so those taxes that are one-year due or less of five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Rears taxes were up to two hundred or three hundred and twenty-three, leaving you with a total tax amount of eight fifty-seven versus five hundred and sixty thousand, and a small allowance of seventeen thousand. So although it did increase, there still is, you know, sufficient value there, exceeding the amount of taxes owing that would not constitute an additional allowance at year end based on this time. When it comes to other receivables, so receivables from governments, about eleven point seven million there, so various grants such as your MSI, Government of Alberta, Wildfired Revenue Stabilization, Canada Community Building Fund, so programs there, just to name a few. Now, when it comes to your trade accounts receivable, so that's up to five point three million. That's really consisted of Parks Canada money that's owed for about one point six million there. Utilities, you saw an increase in receivables at year end in relation to there, as well as various other items causing an increase up to five million from two million. When it comes to debt recoverable for local improvements, so this is a local improvement levy from a couple of years ago, mainly where taxes are initially recognized as revenue upfront, and then over the years, as you collect through the tax system, this amount goes down.
Excuse my interruption.
Councillor. I'm concerned that the volume that I'm hearing coming across is not going to be adequate for the recording. I'm having trouble hearing in the capsule chambers. And for the presentation, if we could somehow increase the volume or have the speaker speak closer to the microphone, I think it'd be for the benefit of the community, because I am like struggling to hear everything.
All right, Mr. Jackson, did you hear that?
I can hear you guys fine. I don't know if I get cranked up on your end or not. I have headphones in, so I pretty much am just talking through them.
Okay, we will see whether we can increase volume at this end. Just give us a second.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. I can try on mine. I don't.
Sure. I think for the YouTube is probably fine, but if it's only coming out of the owl, then at least pulling into the center might be a little bit. So I think the people recorded it. Like, since they're careful, it's
Yeah.
Unless I probably just don't fuck that.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
Yes. Don't mess with that stuff.
All right.
So originally, do you ask when we come a little bit closer?
But thanks for that.
I could, I could try to talk louder if that, I don't know, works. I don't know if I sound the same, but.
Yeah, if if you can project a bit, you know, thank you.
All right. Yes, no worries, no worries. I will. Okay, I'll just try to talk louder. Hopefully that'll, that'll work out. So when it comes to receivables, just getting back to that. So in relation to goods and services taxes, you'll see a larger amount owing there at year end. Mainly in relation just to the activity in the fourth quarter with additional construction invoices expenses during that time. You'll see a small allowance here in your receivables for hundred and forty seven thousand, leaving you about twenty three million to be collected subsequent to your end. Looking back to the statement of financial position, you'll see an investment here in government business enterprise. So this is in relation to the equity. Pickup or the amount associated with equity in your investment in Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. So there's a note related to that. There's a small deficit in there about twenty three thousand. So that's just picked up as zero on your statement of financial position. For total financial asset position about sixty three point five million. When it comes to liabilities at your end, so what the what the municipality owes subsequent to your end, you see a large increase here in your accounts payable and accrued liabilities. Up to thirty seven million. So the government organizations are accrued for wildfire services. That was up to about twenty three million at year end. As well as trade payables up to thirteen point two mainly for construction invoices subsequent or prior to your end. Deemed to be paid after December thirty first, twenty twenty four. When it comes to employee benefit obligations, you saw an increase in vacation and overtime accrual up to just under a million dollars. And as well as deposit liabilities up to three hundred and sixty eight thousand in relation to bid security on hand there. When it comes to deferred revenues, so these are grants that the municipality has on hand at year end. You can see your disaster recovery program, the amount of money that came in from that program of thirty six point five million. The amount recognized in revenue of thirty two in relation to to costs incurred. So there's four point five million at year end still to be used in the upcoming year. Other deferred revenue and grants in relation to to other grant programs, such as various FCS programs. For a total of five point five million. When it comes to capital grants, so MSI capital, your local government fiscal framework as well, you see amounts there owing subsequent to your end. About three million. There was three point six million recognized in revenue in relation to the recreation renovations. As well as the aerial replacement when it comes to the Canada Community Building Fund. So about eight point six million. Still to be utilized by the municipality going forward. Looking back at the statement of financial position after deferred revenue, you have your capital lease obligation as well as your long term debt of twenty three point five million. So your long term debt is made up of various debentures. You had no new debt in the year. You had repaid just under a million dollars and had paid about interest in about a million fifty thousand for the year. When it comes to your debt limits, so your debt limits in accordance with the Municipal Government Act. Is that is calculated at one point five times your operating revenue. With this year having additional funding in relation to disaster recovery program. You see a large increase here in your total debt limit. So at about to eighty eight. Million versus thirty seven. So you can see your limits have increased to sixty four versus twelve. And then as well as your amount of services on debt unused up to twelve point seven from four. This next slide here, you can see what your normalized debt limits would be. So if we were to take out. The additional revenue and calculate your revenue based on twenty nine point three million. So removing the disaster recovery program funding there and revenue. You'll see you're still well within your debt limits up to twenty million. And the amount of unused service debt limit to five point four. So how much in payments you can make on an annual basis. After looking at your long term debt, your next obligation here is your asset retirement obligation. So these are. Tangible capital assets that the municipality has within. It's jurisdiction here that has additional environmental costs associated with it once they become retired. So currently your asset retirement obligation is at one point one million. Using the present value techniques, the total undiscounted amount is about three point five million. So as you move towards the retirement of these assets or the estimated retirement. Which is anywhere between twenty fifty and the and the year twenty one ten. You will move towards that three point five million from one point one. So in essence, you'll see a steady increase in this liability. Which really the purpose is that when you get to the end of the retirement, you would have the funds on hand in order to meet that obligation. So these obligations did exist previously within the municipality. They were just not reflected this way in the financial statements until last year. So again, as we, as new retirement obligations exist in the future, they would get added to this and again. Helping to ensure that there's funding in the future to meet these obligations. So that left the municipality with just under seventy two million in in liabilities. So if you were to take a your financial assets, less liabilities, you'll see you end up with a net financial debt position actually of just about eight point four million. Which is about a fourteen million dollar change year over year as the as the liabilities. For the municipality are exceeding the financial asset position at your end. After looking at the liabilities, you get your your non financial asset position, which in turn is your tangible capital assets of ninety six million. So here you had additions in the year of just under twenty five million. So included a construction in progress was additional work, the arena aquatic activity center work on the on the recreation revitalization there. Wastewater treatment plant as well as your transit fleet facility. Other items of note here is your aerial replacement included in machinery and equipment. And then as well as your amortization expense. So as you, as you purchase new assets or or construct them. They tend, they'll last, say, five, ten, twenty, forty years. You'll take a percentage of those assets which become amortization and those will be recognized in your operation. So. The municipality increased their net book value here by twenty five million. And then recognize three million of amortization or the usage of those assets in the year. Causing the net book value to end at ninety six million. After tangible capital assets, you have prepaid expenses to just under nine hundred thousand. You did see an increase in your insurance cost year over year, causing the the increase in the prepaid value there. Leaving you with an increase in your non financial asset position of twenty one point five million. Now, if you were to take your net financial debt position plus your non financial asset, the asset position, the municipality ends the year. With an accumulated surplus of just over eighty nine million. So within that eighty nine million, a few categories, the the municipality is currently a slight deficit and it's unrestricted surplus of one point four million. Your restricted surplus or operating reserve of two point nine. And then your capital reserve of ten point seven. And then your equity of seventy six million. So kind of what this means. Is if you're to take your unrestricted surplus plus your restricted surplus. You would be at just over about twelve million. With equity and tangible capital assets of seventy six. So you did see. Quite a bit of a decrease here when it comes to your unrestricted and restricted surplus is down about fifteen million. Whereas your tangible capital asset equity has increased substantially by twenty two million. For a net change of seven million, which in turn is your annual surplus for the year. So although your annual surplus, which will show later. Operating revenues less expenses is seven million. A lot of that or the majority of that is generated from your tangible capital asset additions versus your operating activities for the year. So to get started on the statement of operations here, you'll see your operating revenue for the year. Just over fifty eight million. So government transfers for operating thirty five billion as we saw in the the previous line deferred revenue. About thirty two million of that in relation to disaster recovery program funding. When it comes to your net municipal property taxes, those were down to eight point seven million from nine point one as you decreased your your average rates. And then increased or a slight increase in the assessment value for a net change there. When it comes to user fees and sales of goods at eight million versus nine point two million year over year there. You saw less water sewer. And by law revenue really due to the fire activity that that happened in the year. When it comes to other revenue of four million, that's in relation to Parks Canada. So expenses for recoveries as well as some various donations in there. So that's up to four point two million from six hundred thousand. And then as well as your investment income was up to one point three in relation to having more cash on hand during the year. So again, with the really with the additional disaster recovery funding, you saw an increase year over year about thirty four million. Which in turn is in line with the disaster recovery funding and the additional Parks Canada funding year over year there. This is your breakdown of your twenty twenty three operating revenue. So kind of the. The breakdown you're normally used to seeing where you see your net municipal property taxes making up about thirty. Are close to forty percent, about thirty seven percent. Government charges for operations at fourteen. User fees and sales of goods of thirty seven percent. So usually your taxes and user fees are pretty much in line with each other. And then various all smaller amounts. When we look at the twenty twenty four operating revenue, you can see the government transfers for operating made up sixty percent. Of your total revenues where taxes were down to fifteen and user fees were down to fourteen. So. Again, just the additional money coming in in relation to the additional costs associated with the wildfire there. When it comes to your expenses by function. Without amortization expense here. You'll see your protective services up to thirty five million in relation to the wildfire related costs there, money out for the municipality. Utilities were up to six million in relation to water sewer wastewater as well as wire while waste wildfire related costs there. Parks and Recreation of four point three million. You saw an increase year over year as you have interest on debentures. So last year. You saw fourteen million dollars of new debentures that came in. That related the interest on those debentures being expensed this year. I think it's about six hundred thousand really causing an increase there in the parks and recreation costs year over year. Public health was up to four point seven million, roads, walks and sewers. You saw that just under two million. That's in relation to the transit operating costs now that you're seeing. This year versus last. Again, that left the municipality at a total of fifty seven million or about thirty eight million dollar increase year over year when it comes to the to the expenses. This next slide here shows you where what you budgeted for in relation to the line. And then the bar graph represents the actual. Most items were at or below budget. Obviously, when it comes to the protective services with the wildfire as well as utility costs there. Those items exceeding the the budgeted amount. When it comes to the type of expenses versus the department contracts and general services in relation to the wildfire costs. Salaries, wages and benefits were also up as well to twelve million from ten point five. In relation to to various wildfire programs or individuals as well involved in that. Materials, goods and utilities, four point two million there for the JRCU C hotels and travel costs there when it comes to the recovery coordination center. And then the interest on the long term debt up to one million from three sixty seven in relation to the new debentures that were taken last year for the the recreational center revitalization. So when you look at your total operating revenues versus your operating expenses, you do see that the municipality ended up in a deficit this year of one point nine million. As your expenses did exceed your revenues there. When it comes to other income, so you have nine million that comes in in relation to grants that were used for capital addition purchases. So really in relation to disaster recovery program about two point seven million, two point five and MSI and one point four in relation to transit for some of the bigger ones. So if you were to take your total other income plus your annual deficit, you end up at just over a seven million dollar surplus for the year. You'll note here, there's a restatement note here for one point three million. This was in relation to the West Yellowhead. Landfill that you do have a percentage ownership in. So previously it was based on the landfill amounts that are going in there. So it was about seven percent. Based on just review of that and new information there, there was a change to to adjust the cost to reflect twenty percent. Based on the agreements with the with the municipality and and the organization there. So that change was made. Retroactively. So that's where that restatement comes from in relation to the equity there. Which left the municipality with an annual surplus of of eighty nine million. Now, on this next slide here, now the municipality does budget for a zero, zero budget. Reflected within the financial statements under Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, those present a little differently as we don't recognize. Debentures or principal from debentures as revenue. So here you can see. Within your financial statements, you would have budgeted annual surplus on the statements of twenty two million. You had budgeted for amortization, long term debt issuance, as well as transfers from reserves. And then as well as deducting what you had budgeted for for TCA and transfers for a zero position. So if we were to compare year over year. You would see that the annual surplus actually ended up with a deficit of sixteen point three million. Now, some of that has to do with operations, but a portion of that does have to do with the issue of the long term debt. Occurring in twenty twenty three for fourteen million and then really being spent. In relation to twenty twenty four. Causing the the deficit this year and then the larger surplus there in the prior year. So in turn, the municipality ended up with an annual surplus of just under seven point one million based on Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. You're currently in a net financial debt position of eight point five million. So your liabilities do exceed your assets. We do have an audit findings report, but in summary there, we did notify note some significant control deficiencies. No unusual accounting policies or estimates, unrecorded misstatements and no significant difficulties to note to counsel. So just wanted to thank Natasha, Bill and the rest of the team there. For all their help and support in getting the audit done this year. I know it was a bit of a challenge, definitely a lot of. Additional. Grants, costs in relation to the wildfire here in the municipality. That had to be accounted for and recognized within the twenty twenty fiscal period. So that definitely was was a bit of a challenge. And I guess if anybody has any questions at this time in relation to this part, I can definitely address those.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Elston. Counselors, questions? Well, they consider all the details, Mr. Austin. Perhaps I can ask. A very general question. We are in a most unusual circumstance here, given the wildfire and the the increased. Expenditures. I'm not sure whether you have experience with other municipalities in similar situations. I wonder whether it makes any sense to you. To have legislated requirements to have separate. Accounting, the wildfire account or a different disaster. Account rather than trying to integrate them into. The annual. Financial statement for a municipality. It just makes it so difficult to compare. Year over year. I can't imagine the challenge that our own staff was put to. To add all this additional information in a format that just is not designed. For these hugely increased expenditures. Have you got any opinion on whether or not there might be a different way? To approach this with separate accounting for. The emergency event rather than integrating it into our normal accounting processes.
Well, I mean. In relation to, I guess, the accounting framework and what the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standard is really. You know, you need to disclose. The municipality as as an entity. So. Although the wild, I mean, the wildfire fortunately occurred within within Jasper and. You know, you, you, the funding was obtained and the costs weren't incurred. Those really need to be reflected. You know, you you the funding was obtained and the costs weren't incurred, those really need to be reflected. You know, within the financial statements to give a true presentation for the year, obviously, I I do feel that um. Maybe a financial statement with excluding those amounts internally for council's purposes would be beneficial i- in accordance with making decisions as to. Um you know, not having these larger skewed amounts, but. Um you know, in relation to what did happen, they those would obviously, you know, just based on the accounting standards be required to be reported. Uh when it comes to history with these, so I was involved in the tail end of the Slave Lake one as well uh that occurred. Uh I can tell you from experiences with that one. There were a lot, a lot of uh more um variety of grant programs in relation to oversee now better consolidation. Now, I think in relation to having the one disaster recovery program versus uh. Quite a few different individual um programs, not really communicating or well, not that they're not becoming, but. You know, it just that was more challenging on the paperwork side, definitely this one is as well because of the amount of the cost and the volume and. What's going on, but I definitely do see your your, you know, value in in potentially having a. Financial statement without these amounts in there for internal purposes, uh but the um fortunately, yeah, the the external presentation within in there is kind of the. Um requirement from the the handbook there.
Right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And one of my concerns is, and you made mention of our of our ballooning um debt limit. We can now, because so much money has come in to assist with the wildfire, our debt limit now has ballooned to eighty eight million dollars, well. Nobody seriously could possibly consider that we should be eligible to run our debt up based on that. It is so misleading, um but I I appreciate that you are bound by laws as we are, and so. Here we are. Thank, thank you for that response, and maybe that's something we can take up um with the provincial government. With that, um is that given counselors sufficient time to always have the questions or Mr. Given, did you have something?
Your worship, I wonder, uh Director Malencheck also has her report, which actually um. Do respect to our auditors, uh attempts to uh maybe normalize some of these things and address the the questions that council often has. Um just, you know, you're more familiar with administrations, presentation, our quarterly updates, on financials and how we do budget. And I think Natasha's prepared to uh maybe do a bit of interpretation of some of the major themes that come from the audit. And the audit of financial statements in a way that would be more normal uh. For council and the and the general public, so some of the questions council might have might actually be addressed by Director Malencheck.
All right, thank you for that. Happy to hear from Director Malencheck. I update Mr. Ellison, you're you're good for time if we go through this and then come back to you. For additional questions.
Uh sure, yeah, yeah, I'm I'm good.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead. Director Malencheck.
Thank you, your worship. Um good afternoon to you and council. Um yes, so today we're as administration, we're coming to council um to receive. And asked that council received the twenty twenty four audit report as presented for information. And that council received and approved the audit of financial statements of the municipality of Jasper for the year ended of um. Uh at December thirty first twenty twenty four, um. You will be presented it at the end of the meeting, a um copy to sign should um the the recommendation go. Through for uh for coun- for council, um uh but something that I wanted to mention is that the uh municipality is required to. Submit financial reporting um set out, this data set out by the Municipal Government Act. Um it was actually due, as you might recall, May first, um so we had to uh request an extension this year. Um this re- extension was approved, however, we are still slightly behind, unfortunately, um. Um we're a little bit behind the deadline, but municipal affairs have been uh notified of this. So they are aware of where we're where we stand and are quite sympathetic to our situation and um the. Um the it being that we have had a lot more to deal with this year because of the wildfire. Um so I don't want to go over go um. Over things um because. Obviously, Jeff did a really great job in his presentation, but there was a few things that um I did summarize um. And I won't go into things in super detail, but it just to summarize on the report, you can ask questions here as well. Um one thing to note is that council should be aware that the formatting of the audit um audit of financial statements appears different from um. The administration, what administration generally uh presents to council. And um Jeff also went over this in uh his statements about um for instance. Um in how they recognize certain things, so um as we jump down. Uh for instance, how reserves are uh reserve transfers are accounted for. Um and how debts are looked for, so we recognize in our uh budgeted. Statements that we present to council, we recognize that there's a revenue and expense that goes to both of these, but they're treated differently in the financial statements. Um so just to re-highlight that, um I also put into the context of the document. Um a statement on the debt limits that um because we are in this a situation of receiving a lot more revenue this year that they. That um we should look at it in a more uh normalized. Position, um so it shows that we definitely do not um. We shouldn't be looking at the uh financial statements in that regard, just because then it would put us into a really. Different scenario for the next years coming up. Um so that's why we definitely wanted to show that um this, the way it's presented. Um versus the normalized way, um so that it's understood that if if we went that direction, it could cause problems down the line. Um then we also went over um. Jeff also mentioned um already the Westerhead Regional Waste Management Authority as well as the asset retirement obligations. Um so I I won't go into that too much, asset retirement obligations began last year. Um and i- it's something that provides this liability going forward into the years. Um our main main things for the municipality has been asbestos, um the water wells and then the biggest one would be being the landfill. Um. Um sorry. Again, just to re-highlight that we did have a big change year over year um in our, we we went from a. A surplus to a deficit, and this is due to the the wildfire mostly, um. Note thirteen within the context of the financial statements, I think. Tells the bigger story, so looking at that note in the financial statements is the is that big story of how it was affected. Uh the limits of the the municipality um. Capacity to find additional project with without drawing from, uh sorry, I'm uh just uh going a little too fast here for myself, um. Despite the reported uh surplus in the end, uh the unrestricted accumulated surplus in that note thirteen. Remains in that deficit position, so that limits municipality's capacity to fund additional projects without drawing from reserves. Um and so that goes into um the next point of, uh and I think that this is where council might had might have had most questions is. Understanding the deficit in the past uh and the path to recovery, um. Obviously, it's due to the wildfire related expenses, and we also had upfront uh capital funding that we had to um deal with. Excuse me, deal with in twenty twenty four, um so those as we go along. Um will gradually rectify themselves in the and you know, in the twenty five and twenty six year, um. So I do feel like the municipality, it's okay in a sense that we we will recover over time, it's just. It's hard to look at right now, it's it's scary for sure, um. The annual surpluses, so as long as Jasper continues to run annual surpluses like we have in the past, we'll gradually get back. To our good standing, it just might take a while, like everything else is in our world right now, um. Capital project financing, so some capital projects. Again, were um temporarily funded by our accumulated surplus, so once these uh future debentures and local improvements. Levis are in place, those funds will be reimbursed and improve the unrestricted surplus balance. So as we take care of that in twenty five and twenty six. Um then there's the stabilization funding, uh while the province stabilization fund won't fully cover. Um the wildfire impacts, it will help offset some of the losses. Though Jasper must um at this point still cover ten percent of the shortfall. And then strategic financial dis- decisions will be very important, uh recovery will depend on council's decisions going forward. Options will include um delaying projects, potentially adjusting services or increasing revenues. Um that might be with tax rates or user fees going forward. Um if Jasper manages spending carefully over the coming years and you uses reserves wisely and maintains this um a reserve surplus. Sorry, revenue surplus going forward, the deficit should be resolved by the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Depending on how these capital projects are funded, so a lot of things to discuss as we move forward into the budgeting season. So um looking ahead, um administration anticipates that the next several several years will remain financially challenging. Due to the lingering impacts of the twenty twenty four wildfire, um. While the audited financial statements demonstrate the municipality's commitment to transparency and sound fin- fiscal management. They also highlight a continued need for stabilization and recovery. Ongoing fiscal support from the provincial government and other. Governments will be essential to ensure the municipality can meet community needs, support recovery and return to a more resilient financial position. Um with all of that said, uh I am open as well as I believe Jeff is still online for any further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Malencheck. Questions now from counselors for Director Malencheck or Mr. Elliston? Counselor Malenick.
Thank you, your worship, and um. Uh perhaps directed about the restatement about our involvement in the regional. Uh yellow, West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Agreement, um and uh. The change from the seven percent to the twenty percent and um. Will that be something that will be reflected in future financial statements, or is this a one time adjustment?
Uh thi- this is just a one time adjustment, so there uh. Yeah, so we had previously consolidated on a seven percent uh proportionate share. Uh but it was determined that the rate should be twenty percent in a year, so that's really what the adjustment was for, so the twenty percent. Uh allocation of the assets, liabilities and operations annually will be presented in in the municipality statements.
Thank you for that, and the reason I ask the question is that over the past few years, we've made a contribution to that. Organization, I think in the amount of a hundred thirty five thousand dollars. For contribution towards that uh organization, which we no longer have to do. But it appears that we, you know, will have a a certain. Percentage of liability when we have to retire that asset. And we've we've helped to increase the capacity of that um facility. Over over the last year and the year before, twenty three and twenty four, um which we won't have to do in twenty five, um. And and I just want to understand the impact of this going into twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. We should be back to just our normal loads dumping in that area.
Your worship, um if if I may, and maybe with the support of uh Jeff and uh Director Malencheck, um so. Uh Counselor Malenick, um so the municipality had made a capital contribution that we paid off over the course of a couple of years. To help contribute to the cost of establishing a new landfill cell, exactly as as you said. So those uh are capital contribution to that upfront cost is now over. Um the item that's come up in the audit of financial statements, I think is essentially a reallocation of of the. Future costs arising from the West Yellowhead operations. And essentially the municipality's share going from seven percent to twenty percent. And and so it's it's really um this one time adjustment will happen and it will show. That way at that new proportionate share going forward, but it doesn't have an operational. Budget impact on a year to year basis. Jeff, is that a fair way to to state that difference between sort of? The capital contribution that we've made over a couple of years. Ongoing operational costs. And this proportionate share change that really impacts our share of future liabilities. Did I get that right?
Yeah, yeah, correct. I I bu- I believe we were. Previously, we, you know, we had started consolidating the activities of this organization in based on on ownership or amount of uh. Operational budget that's being spent on it, so the really the the twenty percent is the ownership and that's what we're picking up now. Um in relation to uh to your financial statement position there, but yeah, those capital costs are all incurred. And again, is um, you know, even as you contribute to the capital of the organization there, you're still picking up your percentage ownership. Um of that entity with on i- within your financial statement, so that's still reflected within. Uh the municipality, so it's not, although it's money that you're seeing going out, obviously from your um. You know, what your mandate is or what you're responsible for to another organization that. Twenty percent of that organization is being picked up in your books, um uh so, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate the explanations from both yourself and CEO Mr. Given.
Other questions from councils? I wanted to begin and firstly with um great gratitude, I I cannot imagine the challenge of. Assisting Mr. Elliston this year with uh compilation of these uh financial statements, so. The workload this year because of the fire had to be absolutely enormous. And that coupled with the rapid response time, I appreciate that we might be late, but still. To get all of this thrown at you and your staff, so my first question um about that is. Whether or not um you have. The interim capacity, uh because this is going to continue for a while. And whether additional help is required, whether that is. Uh something that would be eligible for uh D R P, because in in the long run, all of this extra work as I see it, it's. A consequence of the fire itself and. Given the challenges that that you are faced with. Have we got assistance or could be capital assistance, and is that something eligible for D R P funding?
Thank you for the question, um first of all, I guess I'll answer answer the question about the D R P funding. At this point, we are cut out of our requests for um additional staffing with D R P. Um and I must say. The finance team is quite lucky in the situation that we have been um um that's fallen into our laps because of um. A staff that we hired as part of the D R P actually moved into the finance team. So she is now currently the the finance manager, so the knowledge that came from working within the J R C C and handling all of. That and then moving it forward because it all obviously works together, we're I'm uh I'm still doing um. Fire related work and so is she and and so is a replacement for her within J R C C. See, um so that I would say in itself is probably what set us up for the most success in our department. I feel like, um yes, our department is very, very busy, um we're always busy to begin with, um but um. I I do feel that the 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 brunt of what. I, I do feel that the, the, the brunt of what has occurred has occurred and, and we'll keep moving forward and, and thank you for the consideration. But at this point, we're doing very well and I would like to also recognize all of their, their strengths and the amount of work that they've put in and their, their complete dedication to the municipality is quite beautiful to see.
Well, thank you very much for that. And if you feel on behalf of the department that you're lucky, then I assure you that we all feel lucky as well. Thank you very much for that. Um, more particularly then, with respect to the normalized statements that you've produced in your report. Is that simply your initiative or does the provincial government at all recognize a normalized approach to these calculations in the event of an emergency?
Um, Your Worship, I believe that, um, they look at the financial statements as presented. Um, the financial information return is submitted to the province and that's what they look at. Um, we present the normalized stuff so that there's just that clear picture of what could be going forward into the future years. Um, and what we see is very important in, in acknowledging so that, um, eh, we, we make the correct decisions going forward.
Yeah, so I'll just add to that. So the municipal financial information return will have disaster recovery program line items or cells within it that'll indicate amounts and stuff. So they'll be able to take your statistical amounts of your taxes and debt and capital and all that kind of stuff and kind of exclude that when they look at their statistical analysis there.
Right. Thank you for that. I, I really do appreciate that normalized approach. It's important for council. It's important for the community to understand that. And I, I thank you for that additional work. And finally, one really particular question. You mentioned in your report, had Mr. Alliston brought it up at one point, um, about amortization of assets. And I think it's in his report, there is a list of of ranges for various assets. Who picks the time within that range to amortize an asset? And the land was like ten to fifty years, you could pick anywhere. Improvements or, or buildings were a different range sidewalks. I think we're thirty to sixty. Um, it seems unusual to have sidewalks that last sixty years around here. But within that range, who determines how we will amortize a non-financial asset?
Thank you for the question. Um, I generally make the call on um, the years to amortize the a- asset. Um, audit, auditors would review those, um, uh, years as well. I've never had, um, an honor to suggest any difference in the years that I've applied against the assets. Um, and my, uh, approach has been historical. Um, so looking at what has been done in the past, but also, um, working with the future as well, given how things have moved along and, and, um, and how things change when it comes down to, for instance, um, fire-related assets and, and whatnot. So there's, there's lots of different things to, um, think about when you're, you're applying those years. But, um, so far I haven't been, uh, challenged in that area and, um, feel quite confident in going in, just also knowing, um, the municipality for the amount of years that I have been here.
Well, uh, I'll add to that too. So with tangible capital assets come into effect in two thousand and nine, um, you know, a lot of guidance was given, um, you know, outside of, uh, you know, year ranges or how long things would last. There was definitely, you know, you, for roads, for example, you see a lot of twenty to forty, you've, yeah, I've seen road bases at seventy-five, a hundred at certain places. So it can kind of depend on really what the municipality feels that their asset length will be, uh, until they either replace it or the expected useful life of it. But with that said, it is good to be looking at that on the, on, you know, within so many years to see if things should change. So if you're for example, buying a grader and you're replacing every five years or say it's lasting ten years, you kind of want your tangible capital asset policies to kind of be in line with what you're, what you're looking there and what your expected useful life is. So I wouldn't say that anybody has the perfect ranges or the expected useful life as, you know, people sometimes or municipalities do have assets that are fully amortized and they're still using them. Uh, but definitely something to, to look at always on a go-forward basis is are the expected useful life of these assets, assets correct? And, you know, is materiality or is, um, you know, developments and construction and all that kind of stuff changes or things lasted longer or shorter than, than expected?
Right. Thank you both. But what I heard was that the ultimate decision is made by local people based on local experience and that seems solid to me. So thank you for that. Councillors, other questions? It appears not. Um, we have some required motions. If there are no further questions. Well, somebody prepares for that. I, I thank you again, uh, Mr. Alliston for your time with us this afternoon, but also your time over the last number of months assisting our staff and getting information from them. And I thank our staff for all the work that they have done on this.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having us. It's definitely, um, you know, from a county perspective, uh, different and obviously when your operations double, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot. So I commend the finance team for, uh, for getting us, um, you know, information. And I'm sure we had a lot, a lot more questions than normal. So.
I would look then for a motion, um, that council received the twenty twenty-four audited report presented on August fifth, twenty twenty-five as information. And that council received and approved the audited financial statements of the municipality of Jasper as presented for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Councillor Waxer? That is your motion. Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak to the motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. And thank you, Mr. Alliston. Thank you, Director Malencheck.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, councillor Keller-Germpy indicated earlier that she had an appointment and had to leave our meeting at three-thirty. She's stayed an extra few minutes to get through the vote. So thank you. We still have form. So councillor Keller-Germpy, you are excused and we will continue with agenda item seven point two, the Jasper Recovery Coordination Center progress update.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ireland and Mr. Council. Welcome back from your break. And once again, happy to present an update from JRCC in regards to the recovery efforts. Starting with interim housing. Uh, we now have two hundred and seventy-six interim housing units occupied. So that's two hundred and seventy-six households that represents five hundred and thirty-two residents. Uh, currently housed. We have additional seventeen households that are in various stages of the lease signing and move-in process. So we are essentially, um, at full offer, although not quite yet at full occupancy. We have a hundred and four applicants who have not yet received offers of housing. So the demand for that remains high as well as ninety-five who are still on the waitlist, who are in need of better options than what we've been able to provide them so far. The long-term campsites at Whistler are fully occupied. Uh, and we have a few sites at Stevie Hollow that are also currently in use as well as some sites at La Bosso Campground used by contractors. Uh, in terms of the technical work at the interim housing sites, the paving is now all complete. The sites are quite clean and quite orderly. Uh, there's installation of storage sheds that is currently ongoing and should be finalizing shortly so that residents have a better way to organize and, and keep their, their many, um, many items. Uh, we are also working with various partners to look at next steps for livability, including things like additional picnic tables, bike racks, et cetera. We also have site servicing work that has begun. So the site next to the museum, uh, is now fully prepped. Uh, we actually anticipate the first two units arriving this week, uh, and additional units arriving next week. Uh, and we are targeting occupancy at the museum site of the eight units there by the end of this month. And also this week at Patricia Circle, the work to initiate the site servicing has started or will be starting there this week. Um, with a slightly later anticipated occupancy depending on the availability of the units. But we anticipate the site servicing there will take approximately one month to complete. In regards to debris management, um, of course, one hundred percent demolition permits have been issued. Uh, ninety-nine percent or over ninety-nine percent of debris has been removed. Um, in fact, we are down to, I believe, the last two sites that still have some degree, degree of, uh, debris that still needs to remove, but all sites are being actioned. So there is no sites that are remaining that have not initiated the process of, uh, of debris removal. Uh, sampling and analysis work, uh, continues. On the sampling, two hundred and sixty-five reports have been submitted, uh, and a hundred and ninety-five have been confirmed as contamination-free. One hundred and seventy-six closeout permits have now been issued. Uh, an interesting note here is that little over sixty percent of properties that have received a COC, so a closeout certificate, have not applied for any type of permit from Parks Canada. Uh, so neither a development permit nor a building permit. Uh, what that is indicating and the other information we're gathering from our, our engagement with the community is that there are certainly some households that are, or properties that are having to go through a few cycles of testing and that has resulted in some delays certainly. And we don't want to minimize the, the, the challenges that those properties have faced. Uh, but there is a significant number who are fully cleared and could be moving forward. Uh, and are not doing so at this point. And there are a number of reasons why that may be the case. Uh, many of them are still in discussion with their insurance companies. The process of building a house from the ground up, I believe as councillor Wilson will understand, is actually quite complex. The vast majority of people will never choose to voluntarily take on a project like that in their lifetime. They will choose from existing inventory or from certain developers who will be able to send to you with finalized building options that you can just choose from some minor customization. Building a house from the ground up where you have to make all the design decisions, uh, is actually a very complicated process. Um, and with many members of our communities still going through the recovery process and having many other things to deal with, uh, there are a number of reasons why they may be facing questions about how they want to move forward, uh, including the extent to which they are insured, uh, and the financial situation that they may need in order to be able to move forward with a rebuild. So, uh, I just think it's important to make it clear for council that the there are some who have pushed the narrative that the reason why more construction has not started uh, is because of some obstacle within, uh, within the permitting process. Uh, and actually what the information indicates is that that is not the case. We also want to remind council and therefore the public that of course, while the debris removal process and the sampling is ongoing, these holders are able to move forward with applying for development permits. Uh, they can even go so far as to apply for their building permit. They just cannot receive their building permit until they receive their COC. But that allows for an expediting of the process so that they are not held up by the testing. In terms of the joint town rebuilds, uh, two hundred and fifteen development permits have been issued since August. Um, of those seventy-three building permits issued, including the seventeen in-town residential properties, one apartment building and one condo complex and six in-town commercial properties and one outline hotel are all directly fire-related. Essentially, one hundred percent of the building permits that have been applied for have been issued. So the turnaround time for building permits is actually, um, very, very efficient and, and moving forward. Um, the large majority of development permits have also, uh, issued. Usually the delay on the development permit side is once again, whether or not the development permit application that is received is deemed complete when it is received. When it is deemed complete, uh, when it is received, the processing time is actually quite short. It's twenty-seven building day or twenty-seven business days on average. But if the application is not complete, it takes considerably la- longer, up to seventy days. Because there's considerable back and forth then that is required between the applicant uh, and, and Parks Canada and the WJ staff who are working to process the permit. On the social recovery side of things, uh, our Pathfinders Program, thirty-eight pathfinders have not been fully trained. Uh, there remains a high degree of interest and uptake with that within the community. Um, and not just because the pathfinders, um, get access to some very nice architery bags, uh, that, uh, is an incentive for them to participate. But actually what we're seeing is really, really good interest from people who want the skills and want to be present and supporting their community. And again, we are seeing significant uptake from the community on, uh, on that program. The Healing Through Fire program launched on July twenty-third and was very well received. Uh, there have been a couple of iterations of that that have already run. Um, and there will be further ones, uh, a few more this, uh, this month and two more in September as well. Uh, and then there's the Community Spiritual Circles is a, uh, program that is being launched with the JRCC, uh, working with mental health, wellness and spiritual, um, faith leaders within our community. Um, and that was launched on July ninth and will be running for an additional sixteen months. In regards to economic recovery, uh, we had the privilege of hosting Minister Volcheski uh, during her visit, uh, to the pop-up, she visited the pop-up village. Obviously, it is her ministry that has supported the Common Continuity Initiative for the Prairie Scan Grant. So we appreciated the opportunity to give her firsthand experience. She met with a number of vendors working there and had some very good discussions. And we understand she came away from that feeling, um, very pleased, uh, and motivated by the work that is being, uh, being done there to support our, our businesses. Um, on the interim industrial park, the, um, Adriana Laundry setup is still ongoing. Uh, we've had some delay in the delivery of the additional CCAN rentals, uh, related to some schematic requirements that, um, that were unexpected. Uh, but they are still expected to be arriving, uh, in September. And we are working with different vendors who have applied for the, uh, for the space to find some interim solutions to be able to allow them to make use of the space, uh, in advance. Uh, and we have procured a very nice portable washing facility um, that will be, uh, used at the interim industrial park to support that facility for the period of time that it is there. And then will remain as a municipal asset, uh, after that program ends and can be used to support other municipal needs, for example, festivals or, or public activities. On the communication side of things, um, well, we are optimistic that later today or very shortly, uh, council is going to approve the final JAS recovery framework and wind your report. Uh, and at that point, we expect that we will go out with some broader public, uh, communication on, uh, on that report. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. That is the general rundown of the things that we've been doing in the JRCC this last weeks.
Thank you for that update. Director Fark, are there questions from councillors?
Councillor Wilson? Uh, sorry, there was a lot there. I may have missed it, but, uh, I'm just inquiring for about the Cabin Creek Utilities. My view, we're almost two weeks behind, uh, the start date. Uh, and so I just wanted to see if there's an update there. I think this twenty-eighth was the original startup date. Um, so, yeah.
So, uh, indeed, uh, my understanding is that they are planning to mobilize later this week. Uh, so they are in fact, they're at, it was in fact delayed. Uh, however, to my understanding, they have not changed their overall schedule. So they are still anticipating, um, and we've had support from our operations team, um, who have gone in and removed a number of the impediments and addressed some of the grading issues in advance of Akko's mobilization. So we appreciate the work of Courtney's, uh, or Director Donaldson's team, uh, in support of that. Uh, so yes, we are expecting them to mobilize immediately, uh, as well as we are expecting them to mobilize immediately in the R4 area. Um, targeting completion of the replacement of utilities in R4 again around the end of August.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I know there's not many building permits issued in that Cabin Creek area, but again, starting projects in there is going to be challenging without knowing, you know, if, if or when they can be accessing those, those sites. But thank you for that update.
Absolutely. And Atgo has information now up on their website, uh, in terms of Absolutely, and Atco has information now up on their website uh in terms of the schedule and and mobilization. Um, and also the ability to coordinate with them for projects that are ongoing there for the period of time when active trenching is ongoing and affecting the access to specific properties.
If I may, uh one word for now, um. Uh, just an update on uh contractor laydown areas and uh when that might be uh, you know, unfolded.
The contractor laydown area in the industrial um in the S block is now, I believe, has gone live. Uh, and we are going through the process, the the vendors have who have applied for and requested space there. I believe they have already been notified or they are in the process of being notified this week. Uh, and we are expecting them to have access imminently uh for the laydown there. The laydown at the Woodlot has once again proved to be complicated. Uh, I made the comment earlier that the number of man-hours and time we've invested in exploring the Woodlot for various purposes. Uh, it seems as though we always come up against some challenges. So at this point, we are still exploring the Woodlot, but we are also exploring alternative locations if it proves that the Woodlot is not viable. Uh, the challenge that we're running into there is that the testing and surface works requirements to make the Woodlot viable may exceed the budget we have available and and may not be cost effective. Uh, and there may be other locations that we can utilize um that come at a much more reasonable um investment. Uh, unfortunately, it took significant work to uh investigate that in order to be able to get to this point where we've understood that that may not be viable. So uh there are only a small number of um of vendors who have applied at the Woodlot. And we are looking at ways to accommodate them quickly in other locations.
I'm I'm good for now.
Deputy Mayor Hall.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, and um thank you, Director Fark, and I really appreciate your comments around closeout certificates compared to how many permits have been applied for it. I think that it just speaks to the fact that so many people are going through this not by choice and have no idea really what to expect. Um, I'm wondering if you can speak to our timeline compared to other events you made in your in your um career. Where are we at? Are we ahead? Are we behind? Are we on track? Um, I think there is the narrative that we're behind and nothing's happening, but I I feel like things are happening.
So that is a very interesting question. It is something that we have been looking into. Um, and interestingly enough, Parks Canada had previously done a little bit of work on this as well. So we looked, or they have looked, J R C C, they'll say, has looked uh at a few other locations, um including Fort Mac, Litten, um Lahaina, High River and Slate Lake. Uh, and the reality is is that each situation is extremely unique. Uh, and it is difficult to benchmark against the the experiences of of other municipalities. What we can say is that we are in my own estimation of where I expected us to be at this point, we are close to tracking on schedule. We are probably just slightly behind. So we had anticipated a higher volume of starts um a little bit earlier uh than what we are seeing currently. So I would say we're probably about a month to six weeks behind where I would have liked to us to have been. Uh, but that there are also very good reasons for that. Um, and so on the whole, although again, I wanted to be sure to acknowledge the fact that there are certainly some of these holders who are going through a more challenging experience and who are facing some challenges that are different than others. Uh, and I don't want to minimize their experience at all. On the whole, only a month to six weeks behind schedule come up big picture is actually, uh, I think, quite reasonable.
Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, just to follow up on that, um. So, yes, there the uh there are other issues holding uh people developments up, but but I just as a quick count. Uh, I think there's nineteen, um approximately nineteen development permits that have been issued uh without um debris removal permits closed. Uh, and this is just a quick count on like the the live map, which is awesome. I, you know, I check in on that quite often. Um. Knowing that they're further along in the process, uh, is there anything the J R C C can do to assist in uh facilitating quicker tests? I don't, I don't, you know, I, so knowing that there's nineteen building permits issued there um that are being hung up with soils and contamination. We're kind of racing hard towards, you know, fall. Um, but if those are far enough along in development stage, is there ways we can kind of assist in getting those ready for uh uh for construction?
So my understanding is that there have actually been at least two additional labs that have come online and that are now accredited to be able to do the testing. Um, so market has uh has expanded and that there are options for expedited testing that comes with an escalated cost. Um, at the end of the day, it's not the J R C C who makes the determination which testing supplier, the contractors or the the leaseholders go with. We've done everything we can to inform people of what the different options are. Inform them of what, you know, that there are expedited options should they choose to pursue them. Uh, but we don't control that process. That is entirely up to the leaseholder together with their uh with their contractors. Otherwise, unfortunately, we can't expedite the testing because it's not something that we control.
Director Fark, I have a couple of questions. With respect to reconstruction contractors, I was happy to see that fourteen sites at La Basso are now currently occupied. That's a good sign. Um, I also noticed that there is a contractor who appears to have set up a camp on privately sold in Block S. I understand anecdotally that others who have tried to get accommodation in Block S have been told that that is not a possibility. Can you, can you comment at all about how Block S might be better utilized to accommodate either um more reconstruction contractors or residents or other staff that might be needed in the community?
Certainly. So unfortunately, there were only very specific portions of S block that would have been considered suitable for even temporary residential use. Uh, and that is due to the pre-existing contamination um of the area. Uh, as an industrial area, it already had, many of the parcels already had uh issues with contamination pre-fire that were certainly made worse by the the fire event. So any land that was deemed appropriate, in other words, met the environmental standards to be used for residential were 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 used there. Um, it's important to note that we have also made um camp sites available or temporary accommodation available uh at La Basso. Um, and that is not fully subscribed, so there is actually quite considerable capacity for additional contractors if they were looking for a for temporary accommodation to make use of uh the site of La Basso. We are also working with our colleagues at Parks Canada to look at additional options also that would be appropriate for the winter, uh including a permanent winter plant that could potentially reside at Kirkessla. Uh, and we are having some conversation with industry players who may have some otherwise commercial hotel accommodation that would be underutilized or unutilized this winter that they may be making, willing to make available for that purpose. So we continue to explore a number of solutions. Uh, but it's not our understanding that there is currently significant demand for contractors that is not being met or is not available.
Thank you for that. My other question is just for clarification um in terms of of the rebuild, so the the third point on your executive summary. And I I appreciate your comments that, I think you said about sixty percent of those who have certificates of completion haven't applied for any permit, and I count myself on one of those and combination of dealing with insurance companies and designers and, right? I don't know who would choose to build a house if they didn't have to. Uh, lots of challenges. However, in the numbers, I I just want to be clear. So you you indicated in the first line that eighty-four development permit applications have been received. But in the next line, since August of last year till post-fire, two hundred and fifteen development permits and seventy-three building permits have been issued. Does one of those, say the larger number, include development permits which were for debris removal? I I I can't make sense of eighty-four permit applications and two hundred and fifteen permits having been issued. No.
So I can certainly clarify that for you, Mayor Ireland, and I apologize for the unclarity. So the eighty-four permit applications is referencing directly the total lost fire affected properties. The two hundred and fifteen is all development permits since August. So there would have been substantial number of properties that were maybe damaged or need a renovation that did not that did not require a complete rebuild. There may have been other projects within the municipality that were, you know, in the pre-planning stage or in the planning stage before the fire. Um, all of those are still volume of work, though, that the Parks Canada and M R J team must process. So I, what we're trying to highlight here is that there is the fire-specific related work, which is substantial and that the the teams are working heavily and hard on. But there's all the other work that still needed to go on and still needs to take place that we also cannot neglect. So we are trying to show that there are both those uh those streams that are being dealt with.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Really clarification. Any other questions for Director Fark? Counselor Waxer.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland, through you to Director Park. I just wanted to express appreciation for the uh if for the commemoration events um in in uh in that uh at the one-year anniversary and that they were well done, respectful and uh and well attended. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciated the attendance and the support of the community and the visiting dignitaries. Of course, Mayor Ireland spoke very eloquently on behalf of our community. Uh, I would also like to give um acknowledgement to uh Manager Olthoff, who I think did an exceptional job as well in terms of the organization and 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 speaking for the um for his part. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Wilson.
Apologies to follow up with another question after that, but, yeah. My, yeah, sorry, but that uh you spoke about Cabin Creek and uh the R four district uh utility uh. But can you speak to the areas of Patricia Kiki, Turret Beline in my head? It seems as if this is only, I, well, I think it's, I think it's gas electric, like overhead.
Yeah, so the overhead replacements um are essentially proceeding according to the schedules done by uh done by Atco. Uh, they are in coordination with the uh telecommunications telecommunications companies. Um, and my understanding is that they are proceeding along their 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 own schedule. We don't, we're not tracking that specifically uh because it does not directly impact the ability for um uh for the rebuilds um as it does in Cabin Creek and the R four area. So if there's a specific question you have around uh an implication for a particular area, but those areas do not require a full utility replacement is my understanding.
Yeah, I guess it would only affect uh being able to have power for construction and then occupancy after that. So uh, but again, you know, there's ways around power, but, you know, the benefit of for builders and homeowners would be able to have power eventually and especially at occupancy.
Yeah, so my understanding again is that the the reinstallation of those utilities is actually moving forward. Um, you may have noticed uh Atco has been quite busy throughout the community. There has been a number of different power line initiatives that they have been have been executing on. So um my understanding is that that is proceeding. Um, I can take that back and see if we can get a better idea of the schedule for you.
If there are no further questions for Director Fark, again, I would thank him for his report and look for a motion that council received the report for information. Counselor Waxer. Thank you for that motion. All those in favor. There are none opposed. That is carried. Thank you, Director Fark. That takes us to agenda item seven point three, Jasper Recovery Framework and One-Year Progress Report, which is, of course, of interest to you also, Director Fark.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, members of council once again. Uh, so my only real comments here, uh because this was before council, the committee of the whole prior to the break. The, at that time, council made a number of free recommendations. Uh, all of those recommendations were incorporated into the final version of the report. Uh, and what is in the agenda package for you today uh is the fully designed and final version of uh of the report that included both your your recommendations and the design, uh which you would not have seen at the previous committee of the whole. Uh, otherwise, the content is uh identical as to what you has um reviewed previously, uh and we are requesting that you approve it for planning purposes.
Thank you for that, Director Fark. Are there any questions particularly regarding the revisions? If not, I would look for a motion. Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, yeah, I would make the motion that council received the J R C C Year One Progress Report for information. Then council approved the Jasper Recovery Framework.
Thank you for that motion. Is there any debates? All question, all those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Thank you. For Park, we we seem to have jumped quickly to to both of those. That takes us to uh agenda item seven point four, Director's Report, the Director of Protective and Legislative Services. Director Don.
Good afternoon again. Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I am here to present my director's report. Uh, some of the highlights includes, um, our capital projects are well underway at the fire hall. Namely, we had a leak detection specialist uh look at our host tower and uh identify problem areas and recommendations for repairs, so that will help us uh navigate that file and consider uh whether or not we need additional capital budget for twenty twenty-six to do that. Um, the after-action review on the twenty twenty-four Jasper Wildfire Complex is now complete. Um, we uh will be addressing that and those recommendations and how we will address them is is an internal conversation we need to have moving forward. Uh, mental health continues to be a priority, especially in light of the one-year commemoration of the wildfire. Um, we've also launched the Residential Fire Smart Sprinkler Protection Program. Uh, residents can get a fire smart home hazard assessment completed on their properties, which qualifies them to purchase a home sprinkler kit at the discounted rate. And another file that's been taking up quite a bit of our time, uh my time and our licensing and enforcement manager's time, and also the uh Urban Design and Standards Department in collaboration with the J R C C is uh construction coordination in the context of the rebuild and the challenges that will cause for uh traffic management and permitting and ensuring that the municipality covers its liability on public lands while providing a process that is uh responsive and useful for builders. Uh, so we're in the final stages of formalizing an approach on that. Um, our staffing is pretty steady. Um, our service trends, uh the fire department is very busy, quite a few calls this weekend, lots of highway rescue calls. We've noticed a pretty sharp increase in those numbers since the beginning of July. Not unlike previous years, but we are uh very much in in the busy season now. Um, and we've also seen an increase in uh requests for Access to Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So our legislative team as well as our I T team has been busy dealing with those. And under Communications and Engagement, there is a municipal election coming this fall. Uh, I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the twenty twenty-five Municipal Elections page. Lots of good information on there about uh whether you want to run for council or uh you're displaced from the community and you're wondering how uh you're going to be able to vote. Uh, there's information on the provincial voter registry. And uh there's also a register of candidates, so uh that is a new requirement under the uh Local Authority Elections Act. When we receive nomination papers, we have to post the name of that individual on our website, so you can see who has filed for nomination for the twenty twenty-five municipal election. And uh last but not least, we will be recruiting for election clerks, so I am the returning officer. Miss Acorn is our substitute returning officer, but we also need uh casual employees is is the category they fall under to help us run the actual election. Those are the highlights. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that report, Director Nidon. Questions from councils? Counselor Wilson?
You suggested uh the construction coordination um to lost base that was on, but uh you're coming up with the an approach. Uh, I think uh permitting will be moved to um to urban uh plan and design. Uh, will this be brought to council before moving forward with the implementation?
Mayor Ireland through to Counselor Wilson. Uh, permitting is being performed out of the Urban Design and Standards Department currently. So uh our licensing and enforcement managers, so protective services used to be responsible for that. And we've been working on the transition um for a little bit. It is now complete. Mind you, we're still uh helping. And um we are working on anything that would require a bylaw change. Uh, for example, uh unattached trailers and things like that, uh we would have to come to council for that. So to get a tentative uh working name is the recovery bylaw, but we might change that. Um, and any provisions that are currently set by bylaw that we would be requesting to be modified to enable the construction coordination to take place smoother and with with a bit less red tape for for lack of better terms uh would come to council in the form of an amending bylaw, which might affect mainly the traffic bylaw, but maybe others. Um, other than that, the permitting is uh, I think squarely in the C A O's purview to to oversee and manage. Um, so that is the delineation of of responsibilities and and changes we would or would not bring to council.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess just to follow up. Thank you. I understand. Um, and my only, you know, request is, you know, um getting rid of red tape, not putting red tape up, but it, you know, there are some challenge, there have been challenges uh in the past with the bylaw and construction companies and that type thing. And so I hope we're just we're moving forward with like, you know, making it more flexible uh and not causing more conflict with bylaw builders, but understanding our requirements as a municipality legally.
Right. Yeah, Mayor, and uh maybe just speak to Counselor Wilson's uh point. Absolutely, that's the direction administration is going. We um are looking to find a way that will enable uh builders to, you know, ensure that they're providing the necessary information to the municipality uh so we can, you know, plan for public safety on public lands. Um, but we're trying to find ways to do that that allows them flexibility as it's, you know, sort of they're working across sites um or their work on a particular site might change over time. Uh, so we think we've got a good approach to that. And as Director Nidon referenced, there's a few different bylaws that we've identified that are actually red tape, so to speak. Um, and we're probably fine for the municipality's pre-fire level of development. Um, but they're not going to be fine, well, maybe now. And certainly over the next couple of years, as we have more builders in the community all operating at once. Um, and so we want to ensure that we're coordinating to head off any potential conflicts between builders working at adjacent sites and to ensure that we have appropriate notice from builders about their activities that are impacting the public's ability to either use sidewalks or roadways. Um, and I think we've got a pretty good approach um that the U D and S team and uh the Protective Legislative Services Team, myself and J R C C have all reviewed. Um, and that's going to be the basis of the bylaw amendments that you're going to see and, you know, where, as Director Nidon said, you know, we thinking, I was thinking of calling it the one big beautiful rebuilding bylaw. Um, but that was soundly rejected by the rest of the team. Um, but an omnibus amendment to a bunch of different bylaws, essentially to facilitate um reconstruction in a way that reduces red tape. So we'll be bringing more on that over the next couple of weeks. We know there's only a couple of council meetings left. And the intention is to bring that to this council term.
Thank you for that. Other questions? I have two, Director Nidon. You mentioned that um the after action review will be internally renewed. I think you use the word we, we will have to review it internally. Does that we potentially include either the Emergency Advisory Committee or council in any capacity?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Ireland. Maybe I added more context verbally than than was implied in in the report itself. Um, so I suggested that the report is now complete. Some of those recommendation recommendations need to be actioned, in my opinion, to to better the outcomes for ourselves and for other communities in the future. And how we go about that is a conversation that I have yet to have as a director with my immediate supervisor, the C A O, and uh and and determine what's appropriate where and and certainly um an approach of engagement and and working together with our partners, which uh include council, obviously, but also include other agencies is is very much what I have in mind. Um, and we just haven't considered that fully just yet, but uh there's a likelihood that if changes are required to our emergency plans, for example, that's the A C's role to review and approve them. So likely it would, but I don't have any details on that at this stage.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the second question I had relates to uh communication and engagement and specifically the ability of displaced residents to vote in the election. And so I think see that it's on the municipal elections page on our website. But is that also being promoted on other municipal channels so that people, particularly displaced people, would have a greater opportunity to realize that there is something on the webpage that they should go look at it? Uh, we're getting close to the election. There may be people across the country that um don't appreciate that they are still part of the electorate here and and will be entitled. But I think there are requirements on them in terms of uh requesting ballots and so forth. So I'm just looking for some assurance that we would use every channel that we have at our disposal to let that news circulate so that people can do what they need to do to ensure that they are properly positioned to vote in that.
Thank you for for the question, Mayor Ireland. We're oh, we're currently working with our communications manager and we're also uh enlisted the help of additional staff to help us with communications for the election. And um I think that's already integrated in in the campaigns and approaches that we're working on. But certainly we can ensure that we leverage all the data sources that we have. I'm thinking, for example, working more closely with outreach services, recovery outreach might have a better grasp on people that are displaced and how we can reach them directly. So we'll we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Director Nidon? If there are not, I thank you for your report on behalf of council and would look for a counselor to make a motion that council received the report for information. Director. Counselor Melnick, thank you for that. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. That takes us to agenda item seven point five Indigenous Relations Framework. And a matter that comes to us by motion from us sitting as committee of the whole. I look to administration. There is there to be a presentation I I saw.
Your worship, no earlier, but no, certainly administration is here to answer any questions council may want to have. This was prior to the council summer break, uh where you saw this as committee. Um, committee did recommend that council approve the framework. Um, there were some minor uh adjustments, I think maybe some medical changes and few others. Uh, nothing major, really reflects the same spirit and content that you saw at the committee of the whole meeting. Um, and most importantly, uh, you know, this is a foundation of forward actions. It isn't all of the actions, as you'll see on the second page of the attachment. Uh, it does speak to some of the next steps, which we developing Indigenous Relations Strategy, um which by its you know, uh is explicitly intended to be developed in consultation with our indigenous partners and indigenous residents. So the framework is a lot like council strategic priorities. And then identifies high level priorities and sort of how we should go about things and and what things we should be doing. Um, but the next steps uh will be indirect consultation with people most directly impacted. Um, and so um along a lot like council strategic priorities, um the administration is holding off on those next steps to en- to ensure that first council has adopted this framework that would allow us to move forward, knowing that we're headed in the direction you want us to see us go.
Thank you for that. Mr. Given? Do any counselors have questions with respect to Indigenous Relations Framework? If not, I would look for a motion that council adopt the Indigenous Relations Framework as presented. Deputy Mayor Hall, thank you for that. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. That takes us to agenda item seven point six. Land Acknowledgement Policy, which has been updated as well and again comes to us by recommendation of committee of the whole. And unless there are questions about that, I would look for a motion that council adopt the land acknowledgement policy as presented. Most relaxer. Thank you for that. Since any hands for debates, I recall the question, all those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Takes us to the Joint Use Partnership Agreement, again here by way of recommendation from committee of the whole. And again, if there are no questions for administration, I would look for a counselor to make a motion that council approve the Joint Use Partnership Agreement as presented. Counselor Melnick, did I see your hand? Thank you for that. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. And the public participation policy, again, having been reviewed at committee of the whole, it comes to us by way of recommendation. And in the absence of questions for administration, I will look for a counselor to make a motion that council adopt the public participation policy as presented. Most Sir Wilson, thank you. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. And finally, the passenger rail master plan um comes to us by way of recommendation. See, given I can't recall, um you can tell me whether there was an outstanding question from committee of the whole about this. But in any way, if you if you can speak to matter in specific.
Um, your worship, so the recommendation is that essentially that council advocate to the provincial government uh for more recognition uh or opportunity for Jasper to recognize at an earlier stage of their overall um plan for passenger rail in the province. Um, the my reflection of the discussion that committee was a bit of a question about the views of the other partners. Um, you know, the other sort of community representatives, even Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Jasper. Um, certainly administration is discussed with them. They are in support of this type of advocacy. They both uh agree that enhanced transportation access to Jasper of any kind is useful and particularly this time. So um, you know, again, recognizing that it really is at a stage of is it in Jasper's interest or their first to be um uh recognized as a something that could happen earlier in the plan rather than often the far off future. Um, both were absolutely supportive of that.
Thank you for that then. And yes, that was now you said it to ask our our partners in particularly in the industry. You have indicated that they certainly are on board.
All of them, yeah.
All right, we look for a motion. Uh, Counselor Waxer?
May council advocate for the inclusion of an Edmonton to Jasper Regional Service in the government of Government of Alberta's thirty-year network of the passenger rail master plan.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Waxer. I see no hands for debates. I recall the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. That takes us to agenda item eight, notices of motion, uh which there none. I would invite any counselor to raise any, but I see no hands. Counselor reports. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I do wish to report that we had a highly successful one hundredth anniversary of the ascent of Mount Alberta by the Japanese Alpine um club and the visitation by the uh forty um delegates. Uh, we're tremendously impressed and appreciative of the efforts of um the community, the Jasper Old Head Historical Society, and especially um the commemoration of the mural that was done. Um, that was uh financed and and fundraising for uh on the uh museum east wall. It contributes to our history here in the community and solidifies, I think, our relationship with long term with uh our Japanese partners. And uh I was very happy to be part of that committee and especially happy to uh see how the individuals who travel from afar um really embraced um the celebration of a hundred years uh of what happened a hundred years ago. The fact that um two individuals uh would be able to reach the summit a- after the fact. Uh, a younger of climbing club, I think, was significant. And then again, reinforced reinforced that uh relationship between um the Japanese uh climbing community and the North American climbing community. And I'd like to congratulate the uh organizing committee, um particularly under the uh guidance of Warren Waxer, uh who was instrumental, I think, in initiating this uh celebration. And it coincided nicely with that hundred uh hundredth anniversary. Um, and that would be my report.
Thank you for that. Counselor Melnick? Any other reports? I will report as quickly as I can, even though we were on a council break. Um, it has been since July eighth and lots has happened. Um, just for the record, I I attended um an event at Fairmont Jasper Park Lodge to honor the hundredth anniversary of the opening of the Stanley Thompson Golf Course there. Um, on July eighteenth, um, Mr. Given and I had a virtual meeting with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, um Mr. Williams. On the twentieth, I attended a barbecue gone by the museum in honor of the Mount Alberta ascent, the centennial of that. And on the twenty-first, I spoke at a event to commemorate and celebrate that first ascent of Mount Alberta that same day, um I attend media scrum that was organized for um this particular room. Mostly, or at least intended to be about um the one year anniversary since the date of the fire. It turned into more about um the after action review. But that was the purpose of that. Um, I think it was later that evening I was able to meet with Minister Olsheski, who was in town for a couple of days. Uh, mad as Director Farc indicated, um she now has the ministry uh responsible for heries economic development, um which has funded the pop-up village, among other things. On the twenty-second, I spoke in Commemoration Park for the one year commemoration of of the fire. I also attended the J R C C meet and greet later that afternoon. Uh, on the twenty-third, I attended a meeting of the Jasper Community Team Society. Um, on the twenty-fourth, I did an interview with uh Ryan Jesserson, who'll talk. On the twenty-fifth, I attended um Stories of Resilience, Voices from Jasper at um the art gallery here and I I received as a as a token of appreciation of this particular book, which I will leave with Miss Acorn. Um, it can be added to what we used to have as council reading file, so I donate that book to to council. And it's it's full of great stories from residents of Jasper with their experience um with fire and evacuation and other matters. Um, on the twenty eighth uh last month. On the 28th last month, again, Mr. Given and I met with CAO and Mayor of Yalodak County about some tourism-related matters. On the 29th, Mr. Given and I met again virtually with Minister of Municipal Affairs, Mr. Williams. A longstanding invitation to meet him after his appointment, just to apprise him of the situation here in Jasper and keeping that important relationship for us. And on the 31st, I went down to Canmore and Mayor of Canmore, Mayor Crossit and I met with our new federal member of parliament, Mr. William Stevenson. And again, just to apprise him of situations that we experience as tourism-based communities and in particular from our perspective, our recovery from the wildfire. And I expect that MP Stevenson will be out here to visit us again sometime in bulk. So that is my report. If there are no further reports. Nomination day is coming up. There's apparently a place on the website now that says who is running, so you can check that out. Municipal election, October 20th. There must be some more things happening to be known that get on the record before then. But if there is anything coming up, oh, there is. I think starting tomorrow, there are events around the new mural. So of course, we've just had one on the east wall of museum. There is another one now going on the east wall of the multi-purpose hall adjacent to Commemoration Park. The theme is the things that grew, recognizing things that grew from the fire last year. And I think the artist arrives in town and starts some work on that tomorrow. And there are a number of public events associated with that mural sponsored, I understand, by the Canadian Red Cross. So that will adorn a municipal facility in a week's time. Counselor Wilson?
I just have a question for administration about two events, or one event, if there is any, for grand opening of the skate park. And then second is a question on our last council meeting. Is it the 16th or prior to that?
I'm going to answer the first one, or is it the last one? First, I saw our legislative services coordinator nodding that you got it right. The last council meeting is on September 16th. So we are getting down to the last few. And with respect to the grand opening skate park, we're working with the Skate Park Society on plans for that. And our operations team is still going to be doing some landscaping and everything else before we are ready to invite people in. But we'll make sure to be informed council and the public when it comes up. But we expect that that will be before the end of September.
If there are no other upcoming events to bring to the attention of council, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Wilson, all those in favor? There are none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you all for sticking it out and thank you to those who watched the live iteration on our Zoom channel and to those who will watch the replay on whatever platform that is YouTube. Thank you all.